It is six thirty, ladies and gentlemen, so we will call the meeting to order. If you would please stand while Sandy pledges allegiance and then we'll have a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda tonight are the consent items. First up, the minutes of the December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen regular board meeting. Any, and if there's no objection, we'll go through all these together, otherwise we can do them the same way. Any objections in doing them all together on minutes? Any additions, deletions, corrections on the minutes for the two thousand eighteen meeting? Certification of January tenth, two thousand eighteen executive session. Any additions, deletions, or corrections on the executive session minutes? Minutes of the January tenth, two thousand eighteen organizational meeting. Is there, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes there? And the minutes from the January tenth, two thousand eighteen public hearing, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? In that case, is there a motion to approve the consent items as read?
I make a motion.
Motion was made by Stacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. All in favor of approving the consent items as read, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Financial report.
So this evening we have item number one, approval of claims, DACA number twelve thousand six forty-three through twelve thousand seven seventy-four totaling two million eight hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. We have two payrolls as well. The December twenty-second payroll was four hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents. And the January eighth payroll of two thousand eighteen was three hundred and eighty-two thousand sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. We have two items on the funds report. One of them is the correction to the cash flows that had some erroneous items on there, so that's, since been corrected. We had started November with, and this is, mind you, this Capital Projects Fund, with four hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. We had five thousand thirteen dollars and fifty-three cents worth of receipts. Expenses for the month of November for Capital Projects Fund was fifty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents, leaving us an ending balance of four hundred and thirty-five thousand forty-five dollars and five cents. And moving on to December, cash flows for all of the fund. We're going to start with December in general fund. We started with five hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. We had nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and six dollars and twelve cents worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were one million thirty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-four cents, leaving us an ending balance of four hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
And maybe this is just year-end accounting from the state, is that, why is there significantly less, relatively significantly less receipts in December?
So the December receipt issue ultimately comes down to our basic grant. And our basic grant is budgeted for the state for all the schools in the state of Indiana. And what was recently found out around Thanksgiving time of November was that due to an influx of more students enrolled in public schools than initially imagined, or calculated, I should say, by downstate, you know, kind of like how we do our budget here for registered schools. So we put, we, you know, budget for X amount of children and that we'll receive funding for X amount of children. Well, on the state level, they budget for X amount of children for the entire state of Indiana, and what had happened was more students are enrolled than budgeted.
Seven thousand six or eight thousand, I can't remember what it said.
I want to say it was closer to six thousand, more students are enrolled in public education in the state of Indiana. So as a result, again, they work with, you know, work within their appropriation allowances of what has been established for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen year. Because those appropriations weren't going to be enough, the decision was made, and as it is established in the state statute, that if, we can't see it unless, you know, you're given additional appropriations, so that our allowance was then cut as well. So now that the legislative session has started, and there is a bill that is in the works right now as we speak to put additional appropriations into the basic grant funding formula, and you'll see in January, I just have been watching that myself as actually, and it's been since corrected. There's been a verbal conversation that's had between the state legislators and the Department of School Finance of, we're going to make this right, go ahead and calculate as you normally would, put these appropriations in, so that schools don't have to miss out on any more months of funding.
So our January appropriations should be what we were expecting.
Exactly.
Because they, it was like twenty-five million, I think, it's probably, I guess we're up six to eight thousand students statewide in public schools, I think I saw. In statewide, no, I was just, otherwise Mrs. James would be really smart.
I commend our legislators for taking prompt action of underskating the need and taking prompt action to remedy the situation, so that's, that's a win-win all around.
I think they're really under the gun down there anyway, there's a lot going on.
Any other questions, but I'm trying to ask that before I move on to debt service. So debt service started with two million two hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, had one million five hundred and three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and three cents worth of receipts through our property taxes that we get in June and December. Month-to-date expenses were one million six hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Those, our month-to-date expenditures were our payment of our lease rental bonds, and so we're making those every, those price-a-year payments out. So we had an ending balance of two million one hundred and eight thousand seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So we're a little bit ahead of where we were, isn't we?
We are, we are.
Two hundred thousand.
Capital Projects Fund started with four hundred and thirty-five thousand forty-five dollars and five cents. We had six hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-seven cents, leaving us an ending balance of one million nineteen thousand eleven dollars and ninety-four cents. So we're year-over-year ahead in this, in this fund as well, which is great. Transportation Fund started with nine hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. We had three hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were two hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents, leaving us an ending balance of one million sixty thousand nine hundred and three dollars and thirty cents. So month-to-date expenses were a lot higher than normal due to that one hundred and fifty thousand going out to rainy day and the repair and operation fund, so that's the explanation of that. Bus replacement fund started with fifty thousand two hundred and three dollars and fifty-four cents. We had ninety thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents worth of receipts. And expenses for the month, leaving us an ending balance of one hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Any questions or questions?
On the transportation fund, this is just, by the way, I really appreciate the year-over-year analysis because that helps us, obviously some, some funds ebb and flow in a predictable way. For the transportation fund, it has October sixteen listed as the start right there in the year-over-year. Is that just, is that really December and we're up eighty-nine thousand?
It is, my apologies.
Okay, so that's just a typo, I should say December, but the numbers are correct.
And then typically what I like to do is a year-over-year analysis in comparison to how, how we did against our budget with our seventeen eighty-two, and which tells us how much we can spend per fund, you know, over seventeen eighty-two, is that approved budget, and then it also tells us how much that we get through, that we should anticipate receiving through property taxes and, and other items throughout the year. And so that's what's going to be coming up in February is that year-over-year analysis and comparison, as well as the transfers that were completed as well.
Any more questions, Rob? Is there any objection to approving financial report, all three? Make sure they're doing separately. Any objections to doing the financial part? Approval of claims, the payrolls?
Yeah, we'll do the claims separate.
Okay. Okay. We'll do the approval of claims separate then. Is there a motion to approve claims twelve six forty-three through twelve seven seventy-four totaling two million eight hundred and eighteen thousand eight forty-seven dollars and seventeen cents?
Sound moved.
Motion made by Jenny.
I have the, I'd like to pull out one claim. Rachel, we had some questions about the conference expense.
Okay.
You know, a few months ago I had somebody ask me why we had two attorneys, because they saw we two sitting here during, on channel four. And I said, well, we're only contract paying one. And Ted said, yeah, that's the right answer. So I looked at contract, and it does say, you know, Ted Wagner or, or Rachel Mar. The concern here on the conferences, you know, that's a lot of money, three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Should the school be paying for both of you? You know, I, I'd like to table it, unless you want to speak for Ted, but till Ted hits back and then we can all sit down and talk about it.
That's fine, because I'm not sure what conversations Ted has had with you all in the, in the past about, about conferences, conference costs for me, I, I'm not sure. So rather than guessing what, what you all talked about, let's, let's just table that.
Okay, that'd be good, if, so we can just sit down and talk about it.
Sure.
That's a lot of money, and there's concern whether we should be paying for two lawyers when, you know, contract says one or the others.
Is there a specific claim number that that's assigned to, or balance, you know, or do we have an invoice number that we can specifically?
Yeah, the invoice would be on the other right, if that's the name.
So invoice number is, I think it's twenty sixteen.
It's a long one, yeah, twenty sixteen.
Two zero one six.
Zero nine two three, zero five three two. And we have two zero one six, zero nine two three, zero four five six.
Yeah, and that's our only number that's under the same number, so I want to make sure we're specific about it because we still have monthly legal fees that we are contracted for, so. I believe, I don't want to put words in your mouth there, Tom.
No, that, that's, that covers us on the.
So for the public record, we want to table two zero one six, zero nine two three, zero five three two, and two zero one six, zero nine two three, zero four five six, is that correct, Tom?
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or if we, if there's no objection from the board, can we just consider that tabled and address it at the next board meeting?
I'd probably vote to approve the claims minus those that are tabled.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the claims?
Brad, may I ask?
Sure, sure.
So to be clear, we're just pulling out the conference, because I, I want to make sure we're paying the legal fees that we contracted.
I, I agree.
Okay, so yes, it's just a.
As we're in the contract, yes. It's just the conference. So even if there is something there, the intent is just the conference for the public record, so we make that perfectly clear.
Okay.
Good point. So is there a motion to approve claims twelve six forty-three through twelve seven forty-four, with the exception of the invoice number from Peterson, Wagner, Perkins that I just read, those two invoice numbers, is there a motion for that?
So.
Is there, I'm worried that, is there any other discussion or question? Motion by Ted, uh, Tom, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Stacy. All in favor of approving claims twelve six forty-three through twelve seven seventy-four, with the exception of the invoice numbers previously mentioned from Peterson, Wagner, Perkins, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Student stakeholder focused donations. We have donations from R E M C for five hundred dollars for the class of two thousand eighteen senior breakfast. A donation from Rochester Downtown Partnership for one hundred dollars to the R H S band. Misty Cricht Lollipops to the R M S National Junior Honor Society. The Manito Monster Triathlon, three hundred dollars to the track program, or R H S Athletics. And the last one is the Moose Family Fund Center, socks for students from the Clothes for Joe Drive to R M S. Before I accept the motion on that, as we always do, I want to say thank you to our community members who always donate these things to the school to help so much, and sincerely is appreciated. So thank you for those. Is there any questions, are there any questions about the donations? Any comments about the donations? In that case, is there a motion to approve the donations as read?
Sound moved.
Motion made by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor of approving the motion, or the donations as read, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Information analysis, second reading of various policies.
Those policies?
Oh, we didn't do payroll and fund yet, did we? We just did it today.
I was.
I'm sorry, I apologize, that's on me. Let's go back to the financial report, see subsection two, payrolls, that the teacher administers and other staff approved. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Steve, for catching my ear. Are there any questions or comments about payrolls? The payroll part? Is there a motion to approve the payroll as given? Motion made by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Do you want to do the payrolls, Brad?
Uh, just, I'm going to do them all separately, all right. Second by Sandy. All in favor of approving the payroll as given, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. And the funds report. Is there a motion to approve the funds report as given by Val?
I move that we approve the funds report with the correction for the transportation fund that took over year-over-year after December, for clarity's sake.
Motion made by Jenny, without exception, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor of approving the funds report, with the exception of Jenny's comment, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Now, back to information analysis. Sorry, Jenny, back to you.
These are all policies that are the level that we've determined to be straightforward, they're either by statute, or they're technical correction, and so we, we present them as they are. Zero one two two, two five one zero, five two zero zero, five four six one, five eight four zero, eight five three one, and eight five four zero, and they are available on the website.
They are on the website for people to look at. Is there a motion to approve, I'm sorry, is there any question or discussion on the second reading of various policies?
Is this where we can do second and third? Rick's not here, I think we should probably. Yeah, to move to thirty, I have to find that there's some kind of a pressing need.
In that case, is there a motion to approve the second, oh, I'm getting way ahead of myself. Is there any other questions or discussion on second reading of various policies? In that case, is there a motion to approve the second reading of various policies?
Sound moved.
Motion made by Sandy?
Sandy.
Second by Tom. All in favor of approving the second reading of various policies, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Approval of sale slash destruction of surplus items. Go ahead, you jump ahead.
Well, there is a list here. One of the things that we talked about today in the office is if we get through the LED project, and I just wanted to clarify or maybe add to this to make sure that we do have board approval. When we talked about the LED project, we talked about being able to salvage some of those bulbs and try to resell to the public as well as some of the ballast. We're trying to hold back enough of them, we know that some of the hallway lights may need replacements, those types of things. So we're holding back and trying to store a hefty amount, but for those that we just know we're not going to use now that we have the Beltra family donation, I just want to make sure it's clear or add to the list, the sell of bulbs and any ballast that we don't believe that we would use to this list as well, so we can clear that out for story to be able to move forward. We're on track that hopefully by the end of February, the entire district should be done, and we'll be able to use it locally at that.
So the surplus equipment request, auction, two each, survey meters, model C D V dash seven one five, one each, dosimeter charger, model seven fifty dash five B, five each dosimeter pen, model C D V seven four two, simplex fire alarm panel, model forty-one hundred U, a green heck exhaust fan, model G B two hundred dash four, at two hundred and eight volts, one phase, seventeen hundred twenty-five RPM, four diffusers, six inches by seven inches by ninety inches, four fin tubes, three inches by four inches by seventy-five inches, three, or transfer boxes, twenty-one by twenty-one by twenty, by thirty-three inches, ductwork, twelve inches by three inches by ninety-three inches, and two vent covers, fifty-six inches by thirty-six inches. Any comments or questions on those items up to the auction?
This goes on the auction, government deal.
Yes, it will, Scott has been so helpful on that, and I want to thank him as well. The C N C machines that we put up for the auction website brought around nineteen hundred dollars, so it's been working out quite well, and Scott, Scott does a wonderful job, Val does a great job following up on that, and it seems to be working well for the district.
And there's currently items listed on there right now, so.
That were approved at the last board meetings.
Any further questions or comments about the surplus items? Is there a motion to approve the sale or destruction of the surplus items?
Sound moved.
Uh, he's close, he's so. You know what, I did that last time. Jenny, Jenny made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Steve.
And just for clarification, this would include the lights and ballast as well?
Okay. That's my whole speech. Okay, thank you.
All in favor of approving the sale or destruction of the surplus items, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Adopting a resolution determining a need for a project, which we had this in our ten twenty-eight hearing, but we need to do it in public means, another public means. Do I need to read this, Rachel, or the exhibit form of determining the need for the project?
You can read it, or you can say that it's available on the website if anybody wants to review and look at it, but it's pretty short, so.
I'll just read it.
It's up to you.
A lot of people watch that on TV, so we'll make sure we read it so they don't have to go online, you know, if I don't have to, I don't want to either, so. This is Exhibit A, resolution determining the need for projects, whereas an investigation has been conducted by the Board of School Trustees, the Board of Rochester Community School Corporation, the School Corporation, with respect to the renovation of and improvements to Rochester High School, Rochester Middle School, Little Elementary School, and Columbia Elementary School, including site improvements and the purchase of equipment and technology, in parentheses, the projects, and leasing all or a portion of the projects from the Rochester Multi-School Building Corporation, in parentheses, the Building Corporation, and whereas the Board now finds that a need exists for the projects, excuse me, and that the School Corporation cannot provide the necessary funds to pay the cost of the projects required to meet such need, and whereas it is deemed desirable to proceed with the necessary negotiations and all other steps looking, excuse me, toward the financing of the projects by the Building Corporation and the lease of such facilities to the school corporation, now therefore, be resolved that a need exists for the projects and that the projects cannot be funded from sufficient funds available to the School Corporation, and that this Board proceed to take such net steps as may be necessary to secure the projects and leasing of such school facilities as provided by the Indiana Code Title Twenty, Article Forty-seven, Chapter Three. Any questions or comments about the resolution determining the need for the project? In that case, is there a motion to approve the resolution determining the need for a project?
Sound moved.
Uh, motion made by Tom, is there a second? Second by Sandy. All in favor of approving the resolution determining the need for the project, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Adopt a resolution approving preliminary plans, preliminary plans, form of lease and authorizing publication of notice of hearing and lease. This would be Exhibit B, whereas Rochester Multi-School Building Corporation, the Building Corporation, has been, previously been organized pursuant to the Indiana Nonprofit Corporation Act of nineteen ninety-one for the purpose of constructing, renovating, and improving facilities for the use of the Rochester Community School Corporation, School Corporation, whereas the Building Corporation has drafted and submitted a proposed lease agreement, the lease for a portion of Rochester Middle School building, the lease premises, and whereas preliminary drawings, plans, specifications, and estimates, collectively the documents, for the completion of the lease premises have been prepared, and whereas the documents have been submitted to and now meet with the approval of the School Board of Trustees, and whereas such documents have been marked indicates work covered by the proposed lease, and whereas it now appears to this Board that said preliminary documents provide the necessary facilities for the students of the School Corporation, and that the proposed lease with the Building Corporation provides for a fair and reasonable rental, and whereas by statute, the Building Corporation is required to own real estate to be leased to the School Corporation, and the School Corporation is required to have the value of the real estate determined by court-appointed appraisers, now therefore be it resolved, the terms and conditions to proposed lease and the documents approved and agreed to as the basis for hearing is required by law, and that such hearing should be held by this Board upon the necessity for the execution of such lease, and whether the lease rental provided therein is a fair and reasonable rental for the proposed building. Prior to final determination of such questions, this Board may determine whether to execute such lease as now written or as modified. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Board is authorized and directed to publish a notice of such hearing required by law, be it further resolved that the Council for the School Corporation or the Superintendent of the School Corporation is authorized and directed to select three appraisers to appraise the lease premises, and to petition the Fulton County Circuit Court, in parentheses, the Court, to obtain an order approving the appraisal pursuant to Indiana Code Twenty dash forty-seven dash three. Be it further resolved, any officers of the Board are authorized to execute a deed and sell the real estate at a price not less than that fixed by the Court. Any questions or comments about that resolution?
Somebody will think we sold the building.
We didn't sell the building, it's lease, and we can issue bonds because.
But every time we do this, somebody thinks we sold it, but don't it.
I forewarned Mr. Hawes that a couple of times that we weren't selling the building.
Yeah. I'm working on it.
If they think we're going to sell the building, please watch RTC four and check the website. Any other questions or comments about the resolution determining the need for a project? I'm sorry, a resolution approving preliminary plans for a lease and authorizing publication of notice of the hearing and lease.
Sound moved.
In that case, is there a motion? Motion made by Sandy.
Let's look at that.
Second by Steve. I'm not going to read it again. All in favor of the previously mentioned resolution, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. If it's as long as the last one reads, I'm going to tell them to check the website.
Here it is in there.
Two-page.
There's a light at the end of the.
Two-page? We haven't read it. Uh, and now we're going to move on to under information analysis, we're going to attempt to adapt to resolution reapproving formation to Building Corporation.
This is, we leased the building to them and they issued bonds in our behalf. We're not selling the building, thank you.
Yeah, no sale.
Whereas Rochester Multi-School Building Corporation, the Building Corporation, has been, has been formed as a not-for-profit corporation to assist in financing, renovating, constructing, and improving facilities within the Rochester Community School Corporation, the School Corporation, now therefore be resolved by the Board of School Trustees, the Board of the School Corporation as follows. Section one, it's hereby determined to be proper in the public interest of the citizens of this School Corporation to reapprove the incorporation of the Building Corporation known and designated as the Rochester Multi-School Building Corporation for the purpose of financing, renovating, constructing, and equipping certain school facilities and leasing same to the School Corporation. Section two, that the articles of incorporation and bylaws of the Building Corporation previously presented to the Board are hereby reapproved. Section three, that providing for the financing, renovating, constructing, and equipping of such school facilities by the School, by the Building Corporation, and the leasing of same to this School Corporation is in the public interest of the citizens of this School Corporation, and it is a proper public purpose for which this Board agrees to cooperate with the Building Corporation and to assist it in fulfilling the requirements of all agencies of the federal, state, and local governments. Section four, that the issuance, sale, and delivery by the Building Corporation of one or more bond, or series of bonds designated Rochester Multi-School Building Corporation ad valorem, property tax first mortgage bond series two thousand eighteen, or such other name or series designation, if determined at the time of the sale, the bonds, is the aggregate principal amount of approximately ten million dollars, is hereby approved. Section five, that upon redemption or retirement of the bonds, the School Corporation will accept from the Building Corporation title of such school facilities free and clear of any and all liens and encumbrances thereon. Section six, that this Board hereby reapproves the current directors of the Building Corporation. Section seven, that the Building Corporation may issue, sell, and deliver the bonds pursuant to the applicable laws of the state of Indiana, may. to applicable laws of the State of Indiana, may encumber any real property, equipment acquired by it for the purpose of financing the construction and equipping of such school facilities, and may enter into contracts for the sale of bonds and the construction and acquisition of such school facilities. And section eight, the School Corporation reasonably expects the tax-exempt obligations issued by or on behalf of the School Corporation, including the bonds as well as other bonds and temporary loan warrants, the School Corporation will not exceed fifteen million dollars in the calendar year two thousand and eighteen, pursuant to section one forty-eight, subsection F four D of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended, the code. The School Corporation, ere revocable, allocates to Building Corporation ten million dollars of its fifteen million dollar limit for purposes of qualifying for the small governmental exception to the rebate requirement. Any questions or comments on that resolution? In that case, is there a motion to adopt a resolution reapproving the formation of Building Corporation?
Somebody.
You know, I'm gonna hold that, Carrie is on that corporation. I probably will abstain just because I want to avoid any conflict of interest for that. So, is there now a, a motion to, Carrie is my wife for the public out there for R T C four, so I'm going to abstain from that vote, just avoiding a conflict of interest. Is there a motion for the resolution reapproving formation of Building Corpor, Corporation?
Somebody.
Motion made by Stacy. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Steve, all in favor of approving the resolution of reapproving formation of Building Corporation, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries five to zero with one extension. Communication calendar updated.
I sent out, uh, per our, um, organizational meeting last week, there was a request to move the study session days from, uh, the traditional Wednesday to, um, either Monday, Tuesday, or Friday, and I have almost everybody's, uh, responses, still waiting on at least one person's response. I'm comfortable in saying that, um, we could have the next study session on February twelfth, it's a Monday, at nine AM, and I'll work with the administrative teams to reschedule, and I've almost got the calendar updated, still waiting, Rick is out of the country right now, um, and got a couple late responses here at the end of the day, but I'll email that out to you as soon as I get those responses, but I'm comfortable with the amount of responses that Monday, February twelfth at nine AM, we can move forward with our next study session. And then as soon as I hear from Rick, I'll pull that together and email it to everybody, but it's out there and pulling it together.
Questions or comments from Mrs. Vance? Um, in that case, I believe we move on, we don't need to motion anything to prove that, we'll just set that up and we'll have to go to the other side. Personnel report, there are four for spring intersection, Amy Banks for Columbia second grade, Amy Freeman for Columbia first grade, Kylie Day for Columbia kindergarten, and Stacia Conrad for Columbia instructional assistance. Are any questions or comments from Mrs. Vance on the personnel report?
I, I have...
Is there a gold star for the first one?
I have to ask for yes, so they're, uh, competition is won.
I thought that was gonna be on the next one, right?
You're just a routine, you're just...
We are specifically waiting, after the Thursday to get back to you, pardon, after this. Hey, snow days, it's something planned, uh...
It's gonna be cold again tomorrow, too.
I know, I know, my phone keeps going off with other superintendents, so...
Are there any other questions or comment from Mrs. Vance about the personnel report? In that case, is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
Somebody.
Motion made by Sandy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy, all in favor of approving the personnel report as given, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Superintendent's business.
The only thing I'd like to share is today, we exhausted our three makeup days in the calendar, the calendar is on our website if you'd like to reference it. So, um, our makeup days, we will now utilize February nineteenth, April sixth, and May fourth within the regular calendars, those makeup dates and bring teachers and students back into the building then. If we have additional days, and my phone has been going off the entire time...
Dylan's already said, if Mrs. Vance...
With local superintendents talking, so I need to get caught up to speed on that. If we miss any more, we would go into e-learning days, and the plan with the administrative team and the teachers is that we are comfortable using up to three e-learning days. Once, um, if we miss another full day of school, we would immediately call the team together, try to find a day that works best across the district, um, would be at least disruptive, and I know that's hard with a lot of athletic teams and those things on the weekend, but we'll do our best to schedule and start communicating that out, and Scott's grinning at me because that's a lot of work on the technology department as well. So we've used those three days that we have built into the calendar, the next three days, if we miss three more, would be e-learning days, and we would do our best to communicate to teachers, the admin team, the community, make sure that that's well set up. We've always had the help of local entities as well, willing to open their doors, we open up some of our buildings as well here to help support families. If we get into missing days four and five after that, we'd be actually looking as the calendar was adopted, absorbing some of that spring break time at the end of spring break, but hopefully we won't get there. Hopefully.
I hope not.
But yeah, it's not looking too good for tomorrow morning at least.
Any questions to Mrs. Vance? Is there any further business to discuss?
I just want to comment, I wanna thank the principals for coming, you know, you guys aren't required to come, but take the time to come, and if the Board asks questions, you're here, and I really appreciate that, so, thank you.
It's a good team, we have a good team.
Mr. Bernacki, that's a gold star last week, we're being the only one here.
He was worried about it. Yeah.
No, no, we're not.
Oscar, you're up. So...
It's a great team.
Mr. Hawes, it's up to you next time.
They work hard and have fun.
Maybe I thought you meant that, like, he showed up here last Monday. Yeah. Ray, we're being... I'll be clarifying that, sorry.
Any public comment? I know there's only four people out there, if you want to offer some public comment.
Maybe careful asking them for public...
Come on, Art, bring it on, we are not selling your building, this time.
Those, those senators that we're selling, those aren't using Columbia, but...
Sure was a science project. Any further business for the Board to discuss? In that case, we'll consider the meeting adjourned.